I think we should be okay.
Think we're all set?
I think so.
Says Whitey's in the waiting room? Okay, I don't see Whitey. Does anybody see Whitey?
He's on the bottom.
I see his name.
Yeah, I see his name, but I don't see... And I'm unable to mute Mr. Shipper, Thomas Shipper.
Really?
Yep, doesn't give me that up.
Chris is muted.
I was muted for a whole time. I just got back on.
Hey, Whitey, you don't have...
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have your picture now.
You don't?
No.
No, I have no clue what happened.
And now you're echoing.
Now you've got two sources, so you're gonna have to mute one of them.
Hey, Chris, are you on an iPad?
Which Chris?
Oh, there he is.
No, I'm here.
Okay.
Am I still?
You're not echoing now, so that's good.
Nope.
Nope. Sound good.
Am I muted?
No.
Nope. Okay.
You're invisible.
No video. Hit the start video button.
Hey, Christine?
Yes?
Now you're gone.
It says participants, the Thomas Shipper.
You know, it's, um... Instead of my video button, I have a start video button.
That's the one you push.
No. No, it says your camera has been occupied.
What?
Let me push that one. It looks like I'm recording. Any commission meeting, Artie Bryson has got all that. My name appears down there, and it says same as systems share. Audio options. Okay.
There you go. Now we can see you. You just have to unmute yourself.
Now, I'm unmuted again?
No, you're good.
You're good. Perfect. Don't touch anything.
Well, I hadn't. It happened. All of a sudden, I was gone.
Okay, I think we're all set. What do you say, Christine?
Yep, I think we're good.
Okay, I'm going to call the planning commission meeting to order for February 4th, 2020. Everyone rise for allegiance. Hug your legions to the flag. Thank you, everyone. Item number three is roll call, Whitey. Whitey?
Chris Hilton.
Here.
Whitey's muted.
No.
No, you can hear him. He's got another connection.
I have another connection? Why?
Got two connections going, Whitey.
It's okay. It still works.
Let's keep moving.
Wait a minute.
No, don't touch anything, Whitey. Just keep going.
No. Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Absent, excused.
Mark Borshardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling.
Here.
Keith Fell.
Here.
Kathy Schwecker.
Here, thank you, Whitey.
You're quite welcome.
Item number four is approval amendments to agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Whitey.
Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Edward... Keith Fell.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Absent.
Mark Borshardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Here. Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
And Kathy Schwecker.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Who was the second?
Me.
Me who? I can't see you.
Keith.
Keith, okay.
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, roll call again, Whitey, please.
Keith.
Yes.
Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane, excused. Mark Borshardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Kathy Schwecker.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. Item number six is new business. Under new business, we have fences and waterfront front yards, and I'm going to turn this over to our planners for PowerPoint.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
All right. So, okay. Well, we're gonna start off just by kind of going over some of the information that you were provided. The township has received correspondence from several residents expressing concerns about fences within a water-facing yard. And we've provided you with the applicable zoning ordinance standards, so I'm just gonna hit a highlight, some of the highlights here. Go back, I'm just gonna... I just wanted to hit a couple of things here. We're gonna talk about it in more detail, though. Per your ordinance, the waterfront is not a front yard. The front yard faces the public street. So where you border on a public body of water, river, canal, or front lot line shall be designated as the line fronting the street. So that, just to be clear, if one side faces the roadway and your rear yard faces the water, then that frontage along the water is in fact a rear yard. And then we're gonna talk about how fences are permitted in a minute. And then, all properties per your ordinance above a boatable waterway shall maintain unobstructed yard space between, beginning at the seawall, the bulkhead, or the normal high watermark of the shoreline for the full depth of the minimum rear yard setback. That's what's called the required yard, required rear yard in your zoning district. So if the setback from the rear is 30 feet, then that 30-foot distance from the high watermark or the seawall, and you go back 30 feet from that towards the house, that has to be kept as an open area per your ordinance and per the restrictions of it. However, the building inspector may permit decorative fences not to exceed a height of four feet. This fence's similar structure shall be no more than 25% opaque or obscuring. So it has to be substantially open. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, so here are some key definitions. Your front lot line is defined as where lots border on bodies of water, river or canal, the front line is the line fronting on the street. And the front yard is that open space between the structure and the street. Okay? Here's your unobstructed yard space, and what really counts here is section 3.29, which says that all property above any boatable waterways, I just mentioned, I won't read that again, for that minimum rear yard setback have to maintain that unobstructed yard space. And the building inspector can permit the fence not to exceed a height of four feet, subject to the 25% opacity. In addition, there's some other regulations here that deal with the type of fence. And that includes that it can be a vinyl-coated chain link fence among other types. And then, no obscuring fence or wall shall be located in the front yard. However, decorative fencing, which was not materially impede vision, shall be permitted in a front yard, provided it doesn't exceed a height of four feet. And a decorative fence is not the same as chain link, so you can't have a chain link fence in the front part. And then, we also have the section 311, which is the supplementary setback requirements that also further... Basically, another way of saying that, again, that required yard has to be maintained open as an open and unobstructed yard. Okay? Township attorney basically is aware of this issue and has basically said that if you're not happy with the way things are now, essentially, you're gonna have to amend your zoning ordinance. So that's the purpose of this discussion. If you don't want those fences in the water-facing yard, there has to be an amendment. There are a number of possibilities, including trying to define both yards as front yards, but we're gonna talk about some of those in a minute. So I thought it might be helpful to look at an image to really understand what your current ordinance says. So at the top, we have a roadway. At the bottom, we have a body of water. So in this particular instance, we have a house there in gray in the center. We can see the minimum front yard setback is showing up there at the top. So that area between the minimum front yard setback and the front lot line is the required front yard. And then the balance of the property between the front of the house and the front lot line is just the front yard. But there is a distinction in depending upon what ordinance provisions we're talking about between a required yard and just a yard. And the same thing goes for the rear. If the house is not built to the minimum rear setback line, then the area from that minimum rear setback line to the water is the required rear yard. And the area that's between where the actual rear of the house is to the actual, either seawall or high water line, is the rear yard. So if we apply the ordinance as it currently is written, go to the next slide. What you can do is in that front yard, any front yard, you can put a four-foot-high decorative fence, but it can't be chain link. In the rear yard, which is the yard that's facing the water, you can have, in your non-required rear yard, so just in the event that your house is setback farther than that minimum rear yard setback, you can have a six-foot-high fence there up to the point of that minimum rear yard setback. Then it has to drop down to a four-foot-high fence, and that's where you could potentially have vinyl-coated chain link fencing, which you would not be able to have in the front yard. And that is how your current ordinance is written and how it's regulated. So if I want to, if I want to have a fence in my rear yard adjacent to the water, as long as it's four feet high and meets those requirements, then you can have it per your current ordinance. Next slide. So, you know, we have a number of options if you're not happy with the way the ordinance reads. One is to make both your street-facing and your water-facing yards a front yard. This would ban fences, except for the decorative fencing that's four feet high. And it would ban all fencing within the unobstructed yard area, which is that required setback area. Note, though, that for a water-facing property, it would also ban all chain link fencing, except fencing in the side yards, as it's not permitted in a front yard. So if you made both your, both yards, the yard that faces the water and the yard that faces the street, if you changed the definition and made them both front yards, you would be in a position where you couldn't have a chain link fence in either one of those yards, whereas now you can have it in the rear yard. So just so you understand what that would do. It also has the potential of raising other complications if you start to change the definition of what's a front yard. We think that if the real concern is fences, that you're better off dealing with how fences are regulated. So one option could be to amend the ordinance to expand the type of fences in the street-facing front yard only when the rear yard is water-facing, and then prohibit the fences in the required water-facing rear yard. So if that area, that area that is considered to be the unobstructed view area, if we don't want fences there, then the fence section could be amended to specifically say that fences are not permitted within that minimum setback area from the water. However, at the same time, would you want to consider allowing a vinyl-coated chain link fence in the front yard so that someone could have them in either, in this case, the front yard, since it can't be in the rear yard anymore? So it comes down to whether or not you want to provide that flexibility for someone to be able to do that. I mean, there's other options as well, but these are just a couple we thought we throw out there to get the discussion going. So I know, I know you've had some input from residents. You've got that in your packets. And I know there's probably some others that are interested, but I thought this might be a good overview to get the discussion started.
Thank you, Rod. I'll note, for the record, we did receive in our packet a letter from George Burgess, and also one from Leslie Gray. And those were contained in our packet. Planning commission members, questions, comments?
Comment.
That's Whitey.
This all started when we received information regarding the six-foot walking path along the river that was apparently fenced in. And that led to the fact that they were required to put the fence in the backyard, which was the water. My, I guess my question is, isn't or can't a decorative fence be just as strong as a chain link fence and keep the dogs from attacking somebody, and therefore, they could have had their fence in the front yard?
In general, I would say the answer to that is yes, if it's the right kind of decorative fence.
Right, because I have one like that in my backyard next to me from the canal to the river. And they had two shepherds and a rustle terrier to keep the dogs in there. So it seems to me, again, we are reacting to the inability of our building department to resolve the issue and put a nice decorative fence in the front yard and keep their dogs there. And so we're now trying to accommodate reacting again to a condition that arises because we're unable to satisfy our ordinances. It seems to me a little ludicrous that we always wind up in that same position.
Other planning commission member comments?
Yes. Isn't the four-foot-high decorative fence in the required rear yard only if the building inspector allows it? Is that, did I read that correctly?
Well, only if it meets your ordinance requirements. So it, there's a couple other items at the end, but basically, this is what the ordinance says, 3.29. Building permit, the building inspector may permit decorative fences not to exceed a height of four feet, subject to the following. And I would read that, that if they meet the requirements of your ordinance, that it has to be permitted.
I'd like to see the fences not at all in them areas.
I agree, but... Actually, this discussion about, especially, I'm gonna say the waterfront, which is the front, because even Whitey, you just said the fences in your backyard. Actually, no, it's not. Not your backyard, but your neighbors'. It's on the roadside, which according to our ordinance is our front yard. So I think we really need to address this issue, front yard, backyard, and fences get dragged into it or vice versa. I don't know which comes first. But this discussion has been going on for a very long time when it comes to waterfront property, front yard, backyard. And I guess I'm trying to figure out how to... It seems like when we address one issue, we create another maybe problem. So I'm open to discussion. I'm not a fan of fences in general, but I think, over the years, I even had Cindy go back through our agendas, the records that are kept at the township. And this topic's come up a couple times. Dorothy DeBoer was chairperson at the time, then Tonya Kowiak. I believe she sent something from her 2014, was it, agenda minutes? I really think, I'd like to see addressed a waterfront, what is your front yard, what is your backyard, and then maybe go from there. But that's just my thoughts, so. Other complaints?
I agree. The only question I have, again, when we got the complaints, the biggest complaint seems to be the six-foot walking path. And if that can be enforced, the fence should not go to the water. They should be able to walk in front of her fence.
Right.
Some very basic information I got today is that matter is being further looked into as far as D restrictions. So I don't want to get hung up on that aspect of it, because number one, I'm not an attorney. Number two, I keep hearing about unless the D kept following from seller to owner to seller, you know, it may not even exist. I don't know. Somebody else that's with legal knowledge checking that.
Yeah.
So I might get hung up on exactly that right now. About other commissioners.
I've always heard about that, being able to walk down the edge of the water, you know, through that whole area, Harrison Island everywhere. But I've never seen any documents that say that's what you can do, you know? So I don't know how true that is.
Hey, a quick question. Essentially, based on our ordinance, whether you say the yard is on the water or the street, you could put a fence there, correct?
Yeah, different types.
Yes.
So, I mean, does it, I understand what you're saying, but does it really matter whether the front yard is on the water or if it's on the road? You can still put a fence in the front or back. The only thing that you can't do is put a chain link fence in the front yard, in that required front yard setback.
Yeah, you can't put it anywhere in the front yard, actually.
Chain link.
Chain link can't go anywhere in the front yard.
So really, it's, I mean, we're just saying, if you're on the water and you consider the water your front yard, you could still put decorative fence all the way to the seawall.
No, you can.
Based on your ordinance, you can, correct?
Yes, per your ordinance.
So whether it's a front yard or backyard, you can still put fence all the way to the seawall?
That is correct, so it meets the requirements. So the question is, is that okay? Then you don't, if you're happy with the way it is, then there's no need to do anything. If you feel like you shouldn't be able to do that, then we need to make an amendment, and we need to figure out how we want to change it.
So if we made that amendment, we would have to, we'd have to decide which, which is the front yard, which is the rear yard. So there's more than one thing we...
Well, you could potentially just leave the yard definition exactly as it is and just change the way the fences are regulated. And you could say, that provision that says that you can put a four-foot-high decorative fence within that required rear yard, you could change that to say you can't do it, and that it can only be in the non-required rear yard. And the downside from that, just so you're aware of it, as I mentioned, is that if you did that, then the only place you'd be able to put up a chain link fence would be in your side yard, on the side of the house, because you essentially would...
Some of them houses are creeped right up to that required yard.
Or the non-required rear yard, and some people don't have a non-required rear yard. Their house is built right to the minimum setback line.
If you did that, how would that affect non-waterfront property?
In terms of non-waterfront property, it would... Let's go back, go back up to that regulation for a second. So for fences, that's for boatable water. So really, yeah, this is all if you are adjacent to a waterway. So this section does not apply. So essentially, if you don't have water, then the six-foot fence can be extended all the way into the rear yard if there's no water there. So your fence can be taller into the, into the rear yard if you're not adjacent to water.
One thing that we have to keep in mind also is that some of the yards that we could potentially have a problem with also sit out on a peninsula, so if, technically, they could have three front yards if we start changing the definition of a front yard.
That could happen.
And apparently, there's townships that do that, so it's not an unheard of thing.
There are, yes.
Yes. Any other planning commission member comments, questions?
And of course, the other option is, you can think about it, and we can just not take any action now and just give it some more thought and see if you want to do something. You don't have to decide.
I'd certainly, you'd like to go along with that. As I really think, as Chris pointed out, you can have a fence in the front, you can have a fence in the back. It doesn't matter where you are. And our ordinance allowed the fence, and therefore, I don't see why we're reacting to have to redefine front and rear yards.
Well, can I make a suggestion? Because I know we have some public that's joined us, and usually public comments, because this is just a discussion right now, coming towards the end of the meeting. Maybe we could think about what we've now heard from our planners and see by the end of the meeting where we might stand and revisit this issue next month. Just a suggestion.
I like that idea.
Didn't we come up with that, putting a fence all the way to the water due to some hazards or something like that, that were along the seawall?
I remember that conversation, and I've lost track of it. I think it was like in the bird aisles.
Yes, it was all really intended to be used in certain circumstances, not like across the board, if I remember right.
And I want to say it had to do with, not smiling, I mean, pets, but maybe children.
Yes, exactly.
That's correct, Kathy. This is Mark. You know, why can't we just make an ordinance as an addendum to the fencing, whether it's required yard or front yard, that no fencing shall be installed six feet close to the river, Lake River Canal, regardless where you live.
On the high watermark or whatever.
You're right. Commenting on that, again, I have a fence from the canal to the shipping channel, and they install the gate, certainly on my side. I don't remember what's on the other side, so that you could get through in case you had to run down and save your child from drowning. And that goes back to the 70s and 80s. I remember when somebody put up a fence next to one of my neighbors from the river all the way to the street, including across the canal, and there was a lot to do because there was no way that you could actually run across his fence, because it was a high fence. And it's gone, it's gone back for a long time that we've had difficulties putting those fences between the canals and the shipping channel. And how do you protect the people and/or dogs even when something happens? Providing other ordinance stipulates you must have a gate for access to the river in case of, for safety aspects.
Right.
Yeah, I have that on my side, definitely. Well, you're in compliance already. No, no, it's not my fence. It's my neighbor's fence. She had the dogs. I only have a little one.
Yeah, so that's certainly one thing to think about as we think about these options. That's certainly another one.
So is the planning commission in an agreement right now that when we continue to think about this? Not, I'm not saying for a long time, but see, maybe in public comments, maybe I have to say, we've now got input from our planners, some other options possibly.
I think there's a reason too why the front yard was the roadside, besides, we're missing something here.
Well, I said, the reason I was told is because that's where your mail's delivered.
Yeah, that's part of it, yes.
So, I mean, this discussions occurred a few times over the... So I mean, I, this discussions occurred a few times over the last, the 10, 15 years. It's not something that's changed. I mean, but that was the reason I was given. It's your address. It's posted on the road. It's your, whether it's a right answer or a wrong answer, that's the answer I keep getting.
Don't we all have our mail delivered at the street though? So I don't see how a fence would interfere with that.
No, you have to have a mail drop. You're right. Uh, or you don't get your mail because, uh, we tried to deliver it to somebody in San Souci and the letter was returned, no mail drop. So you have to have it at the street.
Right, right. So a fence on your yard wouldn't hinder that at all.
No.
No.
Any more comments or should we consider this and move on to item number seven?
Which would be unfinished business already.
Don't get too excited. Just, it's a lot there. A lot of reading material. So is everyone okay with that? I'm just going to take.
Maybe we should specify a date when we're going to, you know, plan or have the planners go ahead and do what you said, Kathy. We'll, uh, investigate a little bit further. Maybe look at other areas and or, um, locations, municipalities, and, um, provide us with, uh, some options, some more options.
Well, how much time would the planners need to do the investigation? Would they have something for it by next month?
Right. I think we can get something to you next month.
It muted me.
No, now you're, ask if you can talk. Okay.
No, you talked with public comments.
Okay. So planning commission members, um, per my suggestion, our planners are going to look into other communities with this issue, this topic and report back at our next meeting. Does that make sense, Rod?
Yes. And we'll be in person, yes.
Hopefully. And in the meantime, I do encourage planning commission members, if you think, forward it, you know, a question or a comment, forward it on to Cindy Babish and she'll send it to the planner. So we have a, you know, paper flow of where everything's going. Okay?
Sounds good.
You don't have to wait to the last minute for sure. All right.
Okay.
All right. Um, if Rod, you're okay with it, how about we move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which is the master plan draft?
Yes. Uh, thank you. Um, we have a fairly significant presentation tonight to go with the master plan draft. And, uh, Matt and Eric are going to tag team on this one. So I will, uh, turn it over to, I believe it's, uh, Matt starting.
Yep, I'm going to start off. So I'm going to walk you through, this is just like a brief overview of.
Matt, for a second, you're breaking up audio wise, or is it just me?
No.
No.
Is this better?
Say it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I turned my video off. We're going to try just the audio. So this slide.
It's all bad.
Still breaking up, man.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, it's still a little crackly. Do you want me to get started with it and you go out and come back in, Matt, and then I'll turn it back to you when you get back in? And we'll see if you can try to reconnect.
Hello?
Hello? Go, go ahead and talk a little bit.
Can you, I, I.
Sounds better.
Sounds a little better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, this slide is meant to give you just an overview of how the plan is laid out. So as you are reviewing it and looking over it, you can kind of refer back to this. So the first seven sections actually, um, kind of look at the existing conditions of what's on the ground in the township today. How, how we got here, um, some of the regional settings, who the regional partners are, um, as far as working with the county and the other local municipalities. So that's what that first, um, sort of half of the plan, those seven sections really go over. And that's how they're broken down. Um, then as you get into the vision, the future land use and the housing, um, that sort of talks about, um, sets the stage for what does the township want in the future? Um, what kind of decisions should be, um, you know, what kind of influences should be guiding the decisions going forward? Um, and why we're, um, suggesting certain things, you know, certain housing strategies or, um, transportation strategies or that. And then, um, 11, 12, and 13, the focus areas, the complete streets and the implementation. Those are really more, um, where you'll find a lot of the action items, um, of the plan that gets into, um, this is where we're going with the township. It really sets the vision, um, and lays those things out. And that's sort of, um, included in the vision goals and objectives as well. But that's just a really brief overview of, of how the plan is generally laid out of where we're at, where we want to go and how we get there. Then this slide, um, this shows the couple of, um, sections that, um, are new to this plan. So the ones that are highlighted in green, those are brand new sections that were not included and that information was not found in the previous, uh, 2012 version. So to start off, um, all of, every section has had updates, um, data has been updated, maps, all that good stuff. Um, there's been a few more, um, regional plans added to the, um, regional setting section. Um, I think their county has been doing a lot with their blue ways and their bike plans. So all that information's been updated. Goals and objectives are, uh, have all been updated to reflect on this new vision. Um, we've introduced some new future land use categories that, um, which Eric is going to go over in, um, a few slides from now. Um, that was that kind of, those came out of a revised approach to the focus areas that were in the previous master plan that we looked at in this one. That was the east end, um, Pearl Beach in San Souci. And then, um, the action, um, after, it's a little more action oriented now, um, and simple. There was a lot of zoning recommendations in the last one. So this plan has a little more detailed implementation. And then the new sections you'll see there related to the resiliency and sustainability, talking about the, um, effects and think, and I, um, things to think about, um, being on the waterfront. Uh, we introduced the housing density plan. So the township can plan, um, the proper infrastructure and for the future. And then, um, the exciting one, the complete streets, um, bike, non-motorized plan is also included in here. So we'll go over that.
All right. So I'm going to pick up with the future land use designations. Um, the future land use designations relate to the master plan map. So, um, there's a legend in the map and that correlates to designation, which then guides land use and zoning. So, um, something to keep in mind with the future land use boundaries. These aren't hard boundaries, um, tied to parcels, um, or strict areas, but they're intended to be, um, blurred or flexible. Also, these, um, the future land use plan doesn't imply that rezoning or development is imminent, but is a recommendation, um, based on what we know now. So, um, most of the designations, um, are staying as is the rural residential and single family. There's no changes there to the text, just some minor cleanups. But, um, the density of one dwelling in a acre per rural and three for single family, um, are keeping with the 2012 plan. Again, waterfront residential and manufactured housing are staying as is. Something we are recommending to change is multiple family housing. The current 2012 plan, the density range is 3.5 to 7 dwelling units per acre. And we're recommended to up that, uh, from to five to 12 dwelling units per acre. Something to keep in mind with this is, um, since density is, is based on acreage of development areas, um, the density that you actually see will likely remain low. Um, so 12, 12 dwelling units per acre, um, could be anywhere from a duplex to four units. If it's, um, you know, a lot less than an acre. So, um, it's not something, it's not a number to be scared of. It'll be related to, um, development areas. So, um, it doesn't mean you're going to have large multiple family developments, but, um, will be tied to development areas, obviously. Um, no changes to commercial and office waterfront, commercial or industrial. And also no changes to recreation and conservation and public and semi-public. And this page are three new designations, um, we're recommending based on, um, what we observed in, um, the future land use plan adjustments, um, that we'll talk about as well as the focus areas. Um, so the residential transition designation is as it sounds, is to be a transitional area, uh, primarily along waterfront areas or M29, likely to remain single family, but a lot more flexibility and land use for missing middle housing, uh, mixed use and some low impact, non-residential uses as property owners desire. And focusing on that these uses are along M29 and the water. So these are, um, more active areas, not, um, areas that are buried within subdivisions or, or only residential areas. Um, the mixed use designation is primarily for the three focus areas. Um, these are small scale, commercial and service, uh, uses close to the roadways, uh, one to two stories and three stories in some instances where a residential mixed use is involved. And then, uh, the waterfront residential two is a more dense version of the waterfront residential designation, designation you currently have. Um, we created this primarily for the perch point area, which is denser than the waterfront residential designation currently allows. And that would be up to six dwelling units per acre, per acre. Again, still keeping primarily single family, uh, with some residential mix allowed. So now we're going to look at the, uh, future land use map updates, uh, that we're proposing. Um, this is, uh, what will be in the document, uh, once those are, those changes are finalized so that, uh, you can track what changed in the map between 2012 and the update. So now I'm going to, uh, break out to discussion of three, uh, power points you received and just go through, um, the changes we're proposing. So did that, did that change our points for you?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is the first of three and, um, I'll stop after each slide, um, if there's any discussion. So this is the perch point area I mentioned for the waterfront residential to, uh, the area east of M29 is a denser waterfront residential area. It's about 3.2 dwelling units per acre, uh, as well as the area to the west. So we're recommending, uh, the waterfront residential two, uh, for this area. Uh, next, um, we found this parcel at the bottom of the triangular DNR own parcel that the DNR owns this large parcel here. But, um, oddly, there's a strip of multiple family zoning along the bottom, um, that wasn't reflected in the future land use plan. Um, so we're recommending to address that, uh, separate ownership and separate zoning, um, by adding again, the waterfront residential to that parcel in case, um, that does develop at some point in the future. Uh, next is, uh, the west side. So this is continuing from the northwest corner of the township down on M29. So this is the west side of M29, south of the DNR, uh, south to Colony Drive, just the frontage area. Uh, this is kind of a mix, uh, of different uses, multiple family and non-residential uses. So we're, uh, recommending to bring some uniform to that with the residential, uh, transition designation. Um, this is more of a cleanup item. Uh, this is Harbor Drive north of Sassa Marina. This, uh, parcel's been developed as multiple family, um, and the land use plan doesn't reflect that. So this is just a cleanup item, uh, to, uh, change this designation from recreation and conservation, which obviously isn't how it's used to multiple family. Uh, next, um, this is a large parcel east of Sassa Marina. Um, we're not quite sure what the history is with this parcel as far as if there's been development proposals or if it, um, is developable, but, um, we don't think it makes sense to have this parcel as recreation and conservation, at least right now, um, given the adjacent, uh, marina use. So we're recommending to expand that, um, waterfront commercial from the west onto this, uh, parcel. Any comments on, on this one?
I had a question on that one real quick. Would, why would you not want to look at, uh, residential for that piece right there? Being that it's surrounded by residential, there is marina on the one end.
Uh, that, yeah, there's something we could, we could, um, we could go with that, um, with the next, uh, version of the draft. It's, we just, yeah, it's, that's, that's.
I didn't know if anybody else had any, any input or thought on it or, or if there was any proposals prior, you know, to that becoming what it is.
I'm not aware of any proposals prior, unless the township maybe building department like.
You can check with them and see if, um, they have any, uh, feedback on if that's been looked at for either commercial or, um, single family.
It'd be the assessor.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll check on that. This is another, um, cleanup item. We feel this is the northwest end of Pearl Beach Boulevard. Uh, this parcel, single family, um, but it's own, or designated recreation and conservation. So we're proposing that, uh, bring that into the, to match the adjacent, uh, properties to the south and east, um, to make that single family. Uh, so this is an interesting area. This is, um, behind the commercial frontage off, off the north side of M29, west of Muskrat Run. So, uh, many of these parcels are developed, this is a, there's two gas stations there are developed as commercial just at the frontage, but the rear of the property is undeveloped. Given the parcel ownership and the, um, non-residential use in the area, we're, we're recommending to extend, um, that commercial and office back, um, to the rear of these properties to create some more, um, development opportunities, given the, uh, parcel boundaries. And we're not proposing to change any of the, um, township or other institutional uses along Muskrat, uh, run in this area.
I think it's all marsh through there.
Right. Yeah. So this, this doesn't imply that these are, um, so with the future land use plans, it doesn't really take into account natural features necessarily. It doesn't imply that these could be developed, um, for sure, but, um, are just trying to leave that option there if, if, um, development's pursued, but.
Wasn't that one of the parcels, money like back in 2005, eight, somewhere in there that somebody wanted to develop it as residential homes?
I don't know that one.
Was that with, uh, Doc? Cause Barrywood's in there.
That's what I was.
You're right.
Yeah.
I think so. You're right.
Nothing's ever occurred, but I think that's what people were looking at at that point.
Where was that?
I think the part you're talking off of Muskrat Run and it goes by, I'm going to call it the old elementary school there of having another way and having, um, homes built in there. But I don't know about what land issues because I know it's pretty wet, uh, places.
It is.
Run that out from past experience with that part.
And just another thing to point out with this is these parcels are zoned C3 currently.
Oh.
So the land use plan, um, changes would bring it more in a lot, more aligned with current zoning rather than, um, suggesting a down zoning, um, as the land use plan currently reads. So, um, that's one of the things that we're, we were looking for is to match zoning.
It makes sense.
But we'll look, we'll check on that 2005, um, with, um, the township.
Thank you.
So this is the block bounded by Helene Street, M29, Lake Point Boulevard and Taff Road. So outlined in red in the top right is Colony Bowl and a vacant commercial, um, site to the east. So this has a split, um, land use designation. So we're recommending to bring that, uh, some uniformly to that with just those two commercial parcels, um, to make those commercial. The middle, um, gray boxed area, uh, we understand is planned for, uh, potential public services. Um, so the land use plan would, um, reflect that if that does actually occur. And then, uh, along Helene Street, um, there's a plan. There's plans for some moderate density housing there, given the current lot configuration. So we're recommending the new residential transition for that, those two frontage areas. So again, this is cleaning up zoning and trying to plan for new uses. And then continuing east, this is Esther Green Street and 29 Island Drive and Taff Road. This area has a split designation. It's not really, it's not zoned that way. And it's primarily used as residential at a dense, denser number. So we're recommending again, the new residential transition, leaving out the Bugsy's on the site. So that would remain commercial and then also leaving out a public utility substation east of Bugsy. So some more cleanup items to match uses and zoning. Continuing east. So this entire frontage here, east of Antonio's is planned for commercial. It's primarily not zoned or used as commercial. So we're recommending to down, down plan that for a single family to match the property north to the rear. If it doesn't seem like there's much momentum for commercial here, at least this amount of commercial. So it may not make sense to plan for that. And second is in the blue outline is a property that's currently used as industrial. So we're recommending the land use plan be updated to reflect that. So we're thinking this is just a closer look at this larger block, trying to more accurately reflect what's there. And then moving over the islands, there was one parcel east of the ferry landing and that's owned by the ferry. So bringing, again, bringing alignment to ownership and use where I recommend you to expand the waterfront commercial just by one parcel to the east to match what's, what the remainder of that landing ownership property is. So that's the first part of three, and that's most of the mainland issues that we're recommending. The second is just Pearl Beach. And we'll talk about this more in later slides, but this is what we're recommending for Pearl Beach on the left, that new mixed use designation just at the intersection of Point Tremble and Pearl Beach Boulevard. And we'll show how that reflect is reflected with the parcels configuration, changing the waterfront residential area between that mixed use area. So this is kind of sandwiched currently between commercial waterfront, commercial and mixed use. So this would get up designated to residential transition. The gray outline here would be public, this would address the peer access and the parcel that fronts it to come to adjust for that new improvement since the 2012 plan. And then to the west, additional residential transition between the multiple family and commercial. So this is just showing the parcels that are on that mixed use area. This is the southeast corner of the intersection. This is owned by the township. I don't believe this building is there anymore.
No.
This is Legas. So not much change in here. It's a mixed use building historically. So this would continue to accommodate that use. Expanding the mixed use slightly by one parcel to the west. This is a commercial building. So this would accommodate the development of this parcel or a combination of parcels. Moving across the street to the northeast, we're recommending mixed use is a vacant parcel. And also to the parcel that they use, these are owned by the same person. So they would likely come in as a development. So we're recommending both mixed use for that. And then again, same owner and squares off that intersection with a mixed use. To the west, again, at the, at the intersection, recommending mixed use into the north, also recommending mixed use. This looks like a non-residential building. So that would create a mixed use over that, just the intersection. And then here's that pure access parcel that we're recommending. Recreation, conservation. Okay. So this is the site you obviously considered recently. This is the around the sand pit. If you recall, there were some concerns with potential access for the sand pit punching through here to Nook Road, which we did not support and ultimately did not get approved, I believe. So as the mass, as the land use plan currently shows, this is planned for industrial, which we don't believe is, is appropriate, given the uses and the residences that front Nook Road. So we're recommending that this goes down to single family to batch use and zoning. So that's all of the changes we've made that we're recommending. What follows here are things we want to discuss with you that as far as if, if changes should occur, we point out as in your land use inventory that you have a relatively low number or low percentage of industrial zone property. So we wanted to look at Fruit Street as potentially the area to plan for more industrial. And that could be either the north or the south side of Fruit Street. We haven't proposed any changes to this area, but it's something we wanted to get your feedback on if there's an area here that we should look at for industrial.
I think they just put a bunch of new homes through there, didn't they? On the south side, fruit.
Hmm.
Yes, they did.
Where is that?
On Fruit Street on the south side.
Is that west of the sand pit or east?
Kind of due south of the sand.
South, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's almost
More south.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it's on the south side of the pit.
If you look at the south side of the street, it looks like there's several new parcels that have been created on the parcels map there that aren't shown on the base map on the zoning. Yeah.
Could be true.
So maybe we'll take a, maybe we'll take a stroll down Fruit Street. And see what's, what's out there. That's not reflected on this map. But that would be, that would be planned for residential. So we don't have to look at that. And we don't have to make any changes here, but we thought if, if you would expand industrial, this would be
See the north side.
So we can think about that more. And this is keeping in that same area. So this is, this is substantial develop, developable parcel here that has access to Fruit Street. It's near that east end area we'll look at in a second and also near industrial. So this is this appears to be a prime, prime development opportunity. Plan for single family zone for single family. So thinking about if that is a higher use, given that it's location between the east end and the industrial area.
Does anyone have any thoughts on whether or not that parcel should be something other than single family?
Well, that parcel is owned by the same people that developed the ones along Fruit Road and also the ones on Point Tremble. So I'm sure they're thought would be residential.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Like, like, yeah.
Not changed to that same, particularly since there's more residential along the frontage there. It seems to be developing. Okay.
And this is something we wanted to talk about. So this is mainland north end of the township is recommended for rural residential. So the lowest designation in the land use plan. The county plans indicate this area as developable parcels and urban and general services districts. So the counties use this area as an expansion, development, expansion area. So we wanted to point that out as far as if this should be, this designation should be increased at least a single family to match the residential to the south. But there's still a rural area. But this is a long range plan. So that something, something to consider, at least as far as aligning the county showing.
So would there be any support to considering moving that to single family residential? Or are you comfortable with the rural residential?
Probably should be in line with what the county's doing, right?
You can consider that.
Anyways.
And when you, so you'll, as part of this process, you'll send this plan out for review with the county and that may be something they come back with if.
They'd look at.
So it might be good to try to match their current plans.
And again, this is a vision. It's not necessarily what's going to happen, right? I mean, we have a community that may say we need to do something different than that. I don't know.
Yeah. You have a chance to reevaluate it every five years.
Thank you.
That every five years, but we do have that chance.
It's likely that this is too broad currently to be rural residential. If you look at the bottom left map is it's land cover. So there is some development along the roadways as you'd expect in intersections. So to just call this rural residential likely isn't as accurate as it could be. But.
I'm sorry to hear you, Tom.
I don't see a problem changing it. I'm missing something.
All right. So that's all we have for that. So I'm going to go back to the main PowerPoint. So continuing with the future land use plan is a density plan. So this is based on the future land use plan designations. And there's density maximums that correspond to the map. So you'll notice in the middle column here. Our density numbers provided that correspond to the designations and the, and the density numbers that are in the text. Something to note, if a property would have an accessory dwelling unit, that would not be counted towards the density number. And you'll also notice that there's a density number over DNR property. That's not to imply that this is to be developed, but there could be instances where the DNR sells off property, a portion of property, and then it's subsequently rezoned for development. So if that does occur, then you have a plan there as a backstop to regulate density of those areas. Manufactured housing parks, those are regulated by the state. So you'll see that there's a footnote there on that there's no maximum density. And then there's a third footnote for the residential transition and mixed use pointing out that we're not recommending to limit a certain number there, but that development regulations in form will be an effective density cap. So those are notes and there'll be text that corresponds to this. And then again, at the bottom, this is something we talked about earlier with the multiple family density number, that 12 units per acre doesn't equate to a large apartment building, but on a 12,000 square foot lot, that's only four units. And this is the same plan for the islands. So now I'm going to turn it back over to Matt and Alasis, talking about the focus areas and the action plan.
Next. Okay. So the first focus area that we looked at was, or that, that's up in the plan is the east end district. This is down near the border of Algonac where the Kroger is. So this was called out in the last plan. It had a few different land uses called for some mixed use and, and other items there. So we refined the approach a little bit to the east end development. Zoned in a little more on having mixed use, where, where we wanted mixed use districts to evolve and then introducing the residential transition and then also introducing the waterfront to district to sort of align with what's there and just, just help guide that, that end a little bit more towards development. This plan also aligns with the Beta Bridge and the Blue Water Trail Towns plans that have specific recommendations right through that portion of the township. The Beta Bridge has cross sections that they're looking at for their trail. And then the Blue Water Trail Towns has a little ferry area there in where the gray is. So we, we've sort of reflected those plans as well. So that those reading the plan can be aware of.
And the thinking here is so on the Kroger side of M29 would open up some mixed use potential here for development on the frontage. There are some examples of Kroger doing some different more dense infill type development at their store. So that would open that up for opportunity. Also mixed use around the launch property here, given the amount of activity and then splitting the designation here to the west to allow some potential residential transition along M29, given that it's along the road while maintaining denser waterfront transitional, single family along the water.
And we're just one brief comment on that. We're, we're pretty excited about this area. We actually see this as an area that could really see some appropriate water related redevelopment that could be unique. And we've tried to describe that in some little sidebar here, that the, the vision here is not to try to create a downtown as we think of downtowns with buildings that are very intense, but it's really to create that hamlet feel like you find in a, in a waterfront community. So it's a small settlement area, a place where it's comfortable to walk, a place where you can get ice cream, where you can also have water related activities and you can have some different housing types and you might have some that breakfast ends, maybe even a, a small little hotel. All of those things could be in that type of a district and really make it a unique place. So we definitely see a lot of potential there.
I'm, to my understanding, the county just bought that piece between the launch in the Harbor Club for a park.
I heard that too.
Well, that would be, we'll have to look into that.
We closed that. It's, I don't, yeah, it's closed. I think we closed on that.
Can you explain what happened, Mark? As far as what property or?
Yeah, it's a, what it's for the waterfront area down there across from Kroger's all the way down. It's, I think, already said that it says been closed on. So county does own it. We're going to be managing it somewhat with another company. But anyways, I don't want to get too in depth with that.
We'll reach out to Artie and see if we can get the boundary and make sure we get it.
We can get that added in here. How that changes things.
I think Artie already put that on the internet somewhere where I, I seem to recall 200,000 or something.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
So moving on, so the next one. So moving on, so the next one we looked at was the Pearl Beach area. So Eric kind of touched on this a little bit in his future land use talk about how the focusing on the intersection there. And, and the land uses right at M29 and Pearl Beach Boulevard. So we talked about, and there's some ideas again in that, creating a waterfront place sidebar. That introduced some new concepts. This really talks about some of those ideas for the narrow waterfront lots. And just really saying that they don't have to go away, that there may be uses that can be. Put right on the road frontage on the same lot. So some of those types of. Strategies, really again, enhancing that pedestrian experience for when people are. Do stop by, either driving or biking or whatever, so that they may feel like walking from one stop to another, walking down to the marsh. And just having, you know, some, some strategies for separating pedestrians from the roadway a little bit and making it feel a little bit more protected. As it mentions there, I'd provide some framework, as I talked about a little bit, for the commercial along M29. So then there is the future land use map. And you can see the mixed use in pink there, right at the intersection, kind of just really focusing on. The Legas and that core that's already there, introducing those, you know, having those waterfront commercial and then the transition districts in between. Those are some of the changes to that area. And then the San Souci focus area. This, we really took a look at the last plan and it called for an expansion of the district and. Sort of looking beyond what the current framework of the buildings are. So we sort of scaled it back to look at. Providing more flexibility of uses within those current frameworks. Kind of like Rod mentioned in the East End District, maybe bed and breakfast or, you know, those types of users that are really compatible with. Mixed use, has that new zoning designation there along the waterfront. And this one, we're really excited about too, because it has the connection to the non-motorized plans. And then as you'll see there, that is the draft future land use map. We included a few additional parcels. We pushed the commercial and office back. Yep, along there included a few more. That may provide if we had heard that parking and space had been talked about in the, in the past. So we just really wanted to, to make sure it was, that all those parcels that made sense were included. And considered, again, this is, doesn't mean how it has to develop. It's just a potential framework for the future.
Actually, I think that's supposed to be mixed use.
Oh, it is. Okay, so it's commercial and office right now. I thought we had, I didn't see it on there. So we'll have to make sure that that's all the mixed use designation then.
Yeah, okay.
And then we're expanding to square off the area. We're recommending residential transition here. That could create some infill opportunities in the rear of these lots. Also, at the memorial here, acknowledging that with the public and semi-public designation here.
And then the action plan. So this is something that. You'll notice is introduced in the goals and objectives section. And then it's kind of carried through the rest of the document and the sidebars will pop up here and there. And the idea here is that we enter, had a few additional categories of action items. So it's broken out into the zoning action items, which require the planning commission. And staff to look at potentially amending the zoning ordinance. Yeah, we included some advocacy action items that just involve really educating the public, business owners. And this is sort of a joint effort between the board, planning, planning commission staff and everyone in the township. To work together. And then there's other, sort of, don't really fall into one of those two categories. So each objective has a one or more action items assigned to it in the goals and objectives section. And then there, in this, the implementation chapter, it goes a little bit further to break it down by. Who the lead body is in implementing those action strategies. And you'll notice, for instance, on the top one, the planning commission. Would be charged with, you know, reviewing access site design standards. So that's where we say, you know, that's something that we would talk to you about and have a conversation and see what you felt on that. We identify some funding sources. There's a matrix. I believe there's seven or eight of them. So that's what that number one is there. It relates to a specific funding source and then the supporting partners. As you'll notice here, the timeframe is not filled in on any of these. This is an item that we like to work on. Once the plan is adopted, one of our first action items we like to go through. Look at all these action items again and then assign a timeframe to them, usually between one and five years, just to give an idea. Helps break out a work plan a little bit more, so we can say this year, we're gonna try to tackle these. Streets and non-motorized. Something that you'll notice is new in there. So this is the map of the non-motorized facilities on Harson's Island. So you'll notice it has all those colorful, those are all different bike routes that we're recommending. This also shows the blue ways around in the canals and waterways and has the ferries. So this is meant to show. Everything that's, every non-motorized way to kind of get around, not in a car throughout the township.
These, sorry, Matt. So these blue ways are again a county plan that we're pulling in. To try to capture all of the facility types. Related to non-motorized transportation. So that is something where. We think is a good thing to have in your local plans to try to tie that together.
Is the, that Crispin drain part of that? Blue ways or is that locals? I don't see it on the map. This is just islands?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually go behind the school.
No, it's not out there. And it's, that's not like a county designated one, if it's not showing up.
Okay.
That's something we can certainly add in there.
It's on the property that the township already purchased for a park.
Yeah, and we actually noted that. I mean, it's hard to see on this slide, but when you take a look at the plan, we noted. That the township does own property there along that drain. So that's jumping ahead a little bit, but those, those blue dots, the dark blue ones. We were sort of recommending, those, those would be recommendations for what we would describe as like a trailhead. Might have an area to park your car, go to the bathroom, a little bit more. And that could be as much as it is, just somewhere to stop and kind of start your plan, your ride. What's that?
I think they were putting one of those by the old school, right?
Near there, yes.
And that's, and that'll, you'll find that on the map there. You'll see that we've identified the township owned parcels. It's township and there's some DNR ones in there. So we've, we've noted that. And I just recommending that in the future, those be considered as places where people could.
Just something else.
Could ride your bike, you could ride your kayak, you could do both. We've called out, we have one right at the, the bridge, right when you get off the, or the ferry there. At the ferry landing area, we've got one at the parcel you mentioned, one in San Souci and the other one in the St. Clair flats.
We think this map will be useful for people that aren't as familiar with the township. There's a lot of recreational visitors, obviously, so this might be the nice, this could be a go-to map for them for biking. Or kayaking that the township can use for tourism purposes.
What question? A few years ago, I thought Artie said there was a big project gonna happen on, in St. John's Marsh. I don't see anything that's happened. I was just curious if anybody has info on that or no.
We didn't hear any, we tried to figure out everything that was going on. We didn't hear of any projects going through there. They may have been referencing the Beta Bridge, kind of followed the orange trail that's on there coming from the. The ferry and leading up, right up to San Souci there. That was on the Beta Bridge plan a few years ago and it looks to have been not included in the most recent version, at least the island extension. So we wanted to make sure that that was at least still called out in your plan, but we didn't hear of any other. Developments there, but that's.
The township is still trying to push a development on that St. John's Marsh area. With DNR, Artie's been to Lansing several times and trying to get it resolved. I think we're pretty close to it, so you ought to put an asterisk close to that, on that site. As well as the property that we own on the island itself, another asterisk where I think Tom mentioned it earlier. On the Blue Water Trails, which is a kayak trail.
So we'll make, yeah, we'll be sure that those are designated as township owned, absolutely.
Right.
Well, Mark, didn't they have money for the St. Marsh development?
Supposed to, but I gotta find out myself where we're at in that. They were supposed to have started it last year and then started it this year, but we've had several delays, as you well know.
Yep, but I thought they had the money. That's the only thing.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm not aware of that, but.
Okay.
That's information we got from Artie at one of our meetings, that the money was in place and was supposed to start. It was either last year or before I lose track.
Right.
There was gonna be parking and there's gonna be walking paths and there's gonna be. If maybe somebody to check into that and see if that's actually still in the works.
Yeah, I'll be meeting with Artie here pretty soon, so. Matter of fact, every time I see him, I ask him about it, so.
So this is, yeah, so this is the plan, what we are recommending here. As you'll find in the plan, then each of those different, so each of those colors on the, the non-motorized map represents like a different. Route that we've identified. This example's from the St. Clair Flats bikeway loop. And, and what we've done here is we sort of get, give an introduction to, to the area, to the route, what a rider might experience riding along this route. Then we give some recommended improvements on how, what we feel is the best. Facility there to get, to make the most riders the most comfortable, based on, you know, the, the industry knowledge. And then we note some of the challenges that are associated with either widening, widening the roadway or, you know. Making sure that pedestrians feel safe while sharing the roadway with cars. So those are some of the challenges that we identified there. And then in the little chart that has the name on the orange chart there. It gives all of the roads that the route or lane is projected to go on, the type of facility and then some design notes. And you'll see below, gives a little graphic representation of what we're thinking here. So this is the, the St. Clair Flats bikeway loop. That was the orange one that I mentioned on the map that comes from. From the ferry landing and then does the little loop around there. So that was largely from the Beta Bridge. We made it the loop. Through the flats area, nicked it back. But so for that recommendation, we would be recommending a separated. And protected shoulder with two-way on one side of the road. So again, and that's obviously, you know, a little bit of a longer term, larger investment, but. So that's why we wanted to make sure that all of those were in there. And then when you see on the plan, so the solid line, anywhere there's a solid line on the map. It means we're recommending something like this, where there's a separated facility. Where the riders are separated from the roadway, either by green belts, by striping poles or some sort of physical barrier. And then everywhere it's dashed, we would be recommending just a shared route where the riders would ride their bikes just right in the street. Sharing with the cars. And a lot of those are on roads that are 35 miles and all of the less. Then this page talks a little bit about, it references some of the steps going forward, but. It gives an idea, so those, we called up one of those trailheads on the map that were the dark blue circles. And this is where Eric was talking about some of the, the light blue ones, where some of the areas that as we drove around and rode our bikes around. Parsons Island, we noticed were just nice places that it's a stop, take a drink of water, take a look at the scenery. Out at, you know, whatever. And that might be something, you know, that we really wanted to push and show that bike, what bike riders could experience. On the route and, you know, sort of steps, just different stops along the way that they might take. So that's what those light blue circles are. So for instance, we have the one on the bottom left there is all the way at the end of South Channel Drive at the turnaround. Giving an idea that if you make the trip down there, this is what you might expect to see. And then this is the, the mainland non-motorized facilities. You'll see the one major recommendation that we're making here is along Taft Road behind the Township Hall. And then we've. All of the other Lake St. Clair bikeway and Beta Bridge, that all those plans are on there, so that you can kind of see how they're all overlap. And then again, this one shows the blue waves. So that's kind of interesting where you can see along the western edge there, the. Ways and the bike ways sort of overlap by the marsh. And then all of these maps do have community facilities on them, just so you can see where parks and schools are. And that's the Taft Road, that's the mainland bikeway that we're recommending to, as people drive along M29, they might. Turn off onto this, they could access parks, Township Hall, it would take you up towards the school, so that's the one, the one mainland recommendation. Before we go to make, are there any, anything that we saw on the complete streets or non-motorized plan that. Is picking out as something that we either missed or is an absolutely, we should reconsider? Or we look like we're pretty.
I don't have anything.
We'll, we'll check on the, on the project you mentioned earlier as well.
Other than what I already mentioned, yes.
Cool.
So these are the next steps. We're substantially complete with the draft document, so. Give you another month or so to continue to read it and think about it. And then hopefully at the next meeting in July. We get the okay to set, to forward the draft to the township board for their review and permission to distribute. From that point, it's distributed to surrounding communities, county, and other planning agencies for their comment. And then there's a state required. A comment period for them would likely be the 60 day or 63 day comment period. So that has to occur prior to the public hearing for adoption. So then we would look at a joint public hearing with the planning commission and board, likely in October, given that 63 day period. So that's all we have on the master plan. And we have some items here under consultant's report. Completes the master plan agenda item.
Well, thank you very much, the three of you. Lot of information, obviously, and a lot of hard work on your parts. So. Any more questions regarding master plan at this point from planning commission members?
Only a simple question. Do you want us to send any comments directly to you or run them through Cindy because. On page 53 of the document that we have, you have the fire hall next to the. What the heck? To the fire, to the, near the old fire hall in town. The fire hall is actually located across from the post office and or. Near the Lions Hall, the fire department. And I think the ferry schedule that you show is. Over at midnight, but it runs the rest of the night, between midnight and 6:00 AM in the morning. And the only other typo that I found was one on page 95. Where you have a double I when it's supposed to be it.
Not too bad.
Forward those to Cindy and just have them go through her and then she'll give them to us.
Okay.
We know Whitey was reading very attentively.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
No, 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 no. I mean, I, I just hit a couple of things that caught my eye and I noted them and I just wanted to know how we got them across.
Any other members' comments? Alright, I look forward, we all look forward to next month's meeting, hopefully not soon. More live in person, we'll see, but um. How about we move on to item number eight, which is planning consultants report?
So this is something you'll see in our next news. So this is something you'll see in our next newsletter, but it's, uh, something we wanted to put on your radar now. The State Supreme Court, um, has, uh, overturned, uh, two local or, or lower court, positions on, uh, regulation of primary caregivers under the two thousand eight Medical Marijuana Act. So, um, essentially, that means that communities now, uh, may proceed to regulate, these types of uses where, uh, they're not, um, currently because the case law and the MMA, was unclear as far as zoning implications for this, so, the, the case in, in instance was the Byron Township required, um, home occupation, procedures for primary caregivers, and that was challenged, um, by the, uh, property owner and caregiver. And that was, that was essentially, uh, confirmed that what Byron Township was doing was appropriate. So what this means is communities can, uh, proceed to looking at regulating, uh, primary caregivers where, wasn't certain that they could, uh, prior to this recent, uh, ruling. So something to consider for you if, um, that's something you wanted to add, that you don't currently have regulations for primary caregivers, so, something to consider as well as just a reminder to look at your permitting and fee structures, uh, for these types of uses, so at least you're tracking, uh, their locations and operations.
Yeah, and this, this has been an issue in a number of communities that, um, have seen, single-family homes be cut, be basically be turned into, um, grow and processing operations on behalf of caregivers. A number of townships and municipalities have, have seen that happen, and with the previous court ruling, it, which seemed to, indicate that municipalities didn't have a whole lot of control, it, it continued to expand. And, um, now that this ruling has happened, many are starting to take a look at it and say, wait a minute. Our single-family neighborhoods probably aren't the best place to have businesses that are being run out of the homes. Cause essentially what happens is a lot of times people stop living there and they just become grow operations. So if that's something that the township is concerned about, if you don't want to see caregivers that are functioning, in single-family areas, or if you want to regulate them to some extent, um, through some type of process. That seems to be an avenue that is now available to you. One example is in New Baltimore, they did this a while back, they said all caregivers have to go into industrial districts. And they actually have an existing facility in an industrial district where caregivers are, in fact, growing and processing. Um, and it's not allowed within single-family districts, so there's, there are a lot of different options, so we just wanted to make you aware of it.
Thank you, any questions from Planning Commission members on that map?
I've got one of those growers right behind me.
I have one across the street from me.
Well, I have one two doors.
Are you sharing in the profits?
No, but there's a lot of trucks, that's what I get to see.
Is this something we, is, ask our planners to come back with more information or suggestions? On how to maybe, if you want to, if the township regulates or not? Any thoughts?
Well, if they're seeing this coming down the pike, we probably should have something in place, right?
That hasn't come before the board yet on the newest update that Rod just presented, so, uh, we should get, uh, the board's, uh, input on that as well.
Yeah, most communities, as far as medical marijuana, it starts as a policy, um, direction from, uh, the board or council. Um, and then that goes to Planning Commission for looking at creating rules, it doesn't mean you have to do anything. But, um, we could start with just checking with the billing department to see if they have, you know, the fee and permit, um, tracking structures in place that, um, they need to and see, maybe get an idea of what's out there. What, um, is on the books as far as these types of uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then maybe, um, maybe the township board can take that up soon in terms of, uh, a policy direction, and that might be helpful, so I would suggest holding off on taking action at this point. But, uh, keep it on your radar and see what happens.
Mark, would you be, um, willing to pass information along to the boards?
No, yes, absolutely.
And we, we can forward you the actual case information as well.
That would probably be very helpful.
Yeah, I, uh, like that too, please.
Any other planning consultant's report?
That's it.
That's it, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Item number nine is ZBA Representatives Report, which we don't have. So, and we're gonna move on to item number ten, which is Board Representatives Report.
Uh, see, the boathouse and the, uh, storage container, uh, ordinances will come before the board on July twentieth. And, uh, other than that, I have nothing else to report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number eleven is Chairperson's Report, I really don't have anything to report, there was a, um, communication in our packet from some Coenergy, just like to point that out. Moving on to item number twelve, Planning Commission Members' Comments.
Happy reading.
And I thank, uh, thank Rod for the, uh, comprehensive, and Rod and the staff for the comprehensive, uh, master plan update. It's informative.
I'm gonna move on to item number thirteen, which is Public Comments, and I know we have some public here, um, just gonna quickly review public hearing, public comment rules. Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson, comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Individuals wishing to speak have three minutes for each member of the general public, six minutes for persons of larger group. I'm gonna skip number three, which is people signing in because we're not in the building. Number four is each individual will be allowed to speak once, it will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. Six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. So Christine.
Okay, I'm gonna start with George Burgess.
Mr. Burgess? He's white.
Can you hear me now? Okay, uh, George Burgess, fifty-nine oh nine Point Trumbull Road. I have a few comments about, uh, the fencing, uh, front and backyards and easements, cause that wasn't talked about. And my comment, uh, about the front and backyards has to do with the right-of-way. It doesn't seem that the, the current rule fits all property destruct, uh, descriptions. I've heard it said recently that Clay Township has a hundred and forty miles of shoreline that covers the north, south, and middle channels of the St. Clair River. So I asked a local real estate agent, how does the hundred and forty miles of waterfront relate to inland real estate? And I was told the estimate is half the houses are on land and half the houses are on water. So fifty percent of your township homes are on water, and yet they're included on land-based housing right-of-right, right-of-way rule. It doesn't take into consideration a lot of differences between the two. The township also has many different zoning classifications. Our four is specifically for Perch Point Isles. This area varied in lot size and setback from original normal regulations. So these changes required a separate district, uh, be created. I believe the riverfront property should be considered for a separate district like Perch Point Isles. The layout and length of the front and backyards, the location of the garage to the right-of-way, the house floor plan as it relates to the, uh, front of the back views are very different from water and inland properties. These differences are some of the reasons for making a separate district. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, um, the, uh, fencing obviously is tied to the front and backyard business, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, property on the waterfront has that you may not be aware of, is we have a water line and a sewer line, that are located on the riverside of the property, which would be the backyard by your rules. There are two easements to service these utilities, there's one for the water and one for the sewer, and they're probably about thirty, forty feet, feet apart. So, you know, how does, uh, land that occupies easement, uh, need to be, uh, free of development? Uh, are you concerned that there's a fence located on an easement? Uh, these are a couple of the things that I wanted to bring your attention and, uh, give you time to consider. And this is not just in Pearl Beach on the, uh, uh, utilities, uh, just about all the waterfront, from, uh, uh, going up to Algonack, cause we've checked with, uh, other residents, uh, past us. And, uh, the sewer and the water is in the front yard or your, your backyard, as you call it, uh, on the waterfront. So, uh, if there ever has to be a need to, uh, service this, uh, they will come on the property. And I don't think that they're gonna be pleased to find fences and any other kind of, uh, what, uh, patios, uh, whatever sitting on top of the easement. So those are my comments, and I hope you take them into consideration.
Thank you very much, Pastor Burgess, we appreciate your comments and we will definitely take them into consideration.
One other thing I can add, uh, on the, um, six-foot walk, I have a, uh, document that says that, uh, there are, there were six-foot walks, but also in your, uh, uh, township, uh, uh, regulations and, and whatnot. It says that, that deed restrictions are not enforceable by the township, that has to be enforced by the property owner.
Thank you for that comment, appreciate it.
Okay, that's it.
Chris?
Okay, Carol Sampson.
Carol Sampson? Carol Sampson, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, she's not muted now.
Carol?
She's unmuted, she, she should be okay.
Carol Sampson, can you hear us? Would you like to say anything? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, is anybody else?
No.
Leslie Gray?
Leslie Gray?
All right, I'm gonna unmute.
We can hear you.
You just muted yourself.
Okay, uh, I have a property recently acquired.
Let me stop you for a minute, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, sure, Leslie Gray, eighty-one eighty Snibora. So I'm on an out island.
Okay.
Okay, so I recently acquired the property here, um, after the passing of my father. I have friends that live on Point Trumbull, and the fence issue, um, did address a question that I have as a new property owner. I feel like this is a property that I want to retain the value of. And I feel strongly that if structures such as chain-linked fences are along the riverside property, that just lowers the whole, um, aesthetics of the area, lowers the property values. And I believe this area is so rich and diverse in the property that, that the ordinances should address that. There should be, uh, specific ordinances for riverfront property. And then that for residential that is off the water. So, um, I, I know that one person had spoken about it being reactive and reaction to a neighbor, putting up a fence. And apparently that's just brought an issue to the attention of people, and we weren't aware. I was not aware that, uh, riverfront property could have fences all along it. And I, I only own this property for less than a year, but I've been out here my whole life. And that is something I never wanna see, is a bunch of fences when I'm taking a cruise along the river or any other waterways. So it's just something to think about when you're looking at the future plan for the area. Again, it's very diverse, if it's one-size-fits-all zoning ordinance for residential, I don't think it meets the needs of the area. So I, I think it needs to be considered, the diversity should be considered in your ordinance.
Thank you very much for your comments of participating, we appreciate it. Christine?
Thomas Shipper? Thomas Shipper?
Thomas Shipper, five eight eight seven, Point Trumbull Road. Can you hear me? Okay. So I was just wondering, um, why exactly in two thousand sixteen did they decide to change the front yards, uh, to the backyards? And, we're, that's kind of like what we're asking for. Now we're in non-conforming situations because now on the roadside, we have trailers, we have, you know, out garages. We're only allowed so many trailers, uh, et cetera. And if everybody put a fence between our narrow lots, I, I wouldn't be able to get barely my riding lawnmower through there. So I'm just wondering, like, when did it change the, you know, or why did it change in two thousand sixteen? That's it.
Can help me, but I don't think anything changed in two thousand sixteen as far as front yard, rear yard, as far as the designation goes.
Well, in two thousand seven and nineteen ninety-six also, you, you couldn't, you, you, you couldn't have a, a fence, on, on the riverside. And, and then the verbiage changed later on in two thousand sixteen. I mean, if you go back to read all the, the fence rules.
I don't have the fence rules in front of me, but I'm talking front yard, backyard, and I'm not sure if any of our planners are still with us. But, um, I know we've addressed fences. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I read the two thousand seven fence laws and, and they're different from, you know, two thousand sixteen.
Fencing has been an ongoing discussion with township, and it's had numerous changes, so I don't disagree with you on that. So, um, we will definitely, um, as you heard our conversation, we will definitely take a look at this again and take everybody's comments into consideration, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
No one else?
I'd like to talk, Paula Burgess.
I'm sorry, Paula Burgess, did you say?
Yes, uh-huh, address is fifty-nine oh nine Point Trumbull Road. And I, I just kind of wanted to describe this little piece of property here that we have. Actually, our property is twelve homes, and they run from Pearl Beach Boulevard, Maynard Drive, or the Pearl Beach Grain Ditch. We're kind of exclusive, there's no way for any, anyone else to get in there. Gabriel's Marina is on one side and the canal's on the other side. So all of our lots are about three hundred and fifty feet deep, and they range from three, thirty to fifty feet wide. That explains why our riverfront property is so important to us. We have a riverfront park here, there has never been a fence in the yard here. I'm six generations, there's never been a fence along this piece of riverfront. We have neighbors that, that have lived here for a long time, neighbors come and go. When a new one moves in, we always welcome them and explain to them that we love our riverfront park, and they too should love their riverfront park. There has never been a concern about any fences, cause no one's ever wanted to fence in the riverfront along here. However, like my husband said, when our new neighbor wished to put up a fence to keep her dog safe, I pointed out several small fences in the roadside that's been there, their grandfathered. Every house along here at one time had a fence around there, and so she thought the idea was great. So she went ahead and started putting up her poles and was going to put up a fence. The building inspector came along, told her she needed a permit and that she could not put a fence up there. The fence had to go on the riverside, no questions asked, that was repeated many times. He gave her, so he gave her the permission, and now she has a fence one hundred and forty-four feet long, that goes all the way to the north channel, all the way to the seawall. However, she never closed it in, so her dogs do go out on the dock on occasion. So she's not keeping them safe in her fenced-in yard. This should have never happened because an, uh, an ordinance that state river lots shall maintain the waterside, as an open and unobstructed yard, fences are an obstruction. And that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much for your opinion, and we appreciate.
I don't understand why it can't be changed, if they could change the, the trailer park down there that has a new name now, why can't we change this?
Well, we're gonna check in to see what we're gonna do. Well, we're going to check in to see what we're going to do. So we appreciate.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, do you have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, seeing no one else for public comments. I'm going to move on to item number 14, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, hold on. Who made the motion?
I'll let Whitey have it.
I'm sorry. Seconded by?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank everyone for attending. Appreciate your patience with this meeting. And planners, thank you again for, I see Matt waving down there. Thank you, Matt. I do recognize you this time. So thank you to the audience for participating, too. Take care, Rod. Moving forward to next month, and the information will have, okay?
See you next month.
So long.